I'd like to call the meeting to order. Could we all stand for a pledge of allegiance? Bob, would you like to lead us?
You betcha. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I'm done. Liz, could we have roll call, please?
Bryce? Here.
Present.
MacArthur?
Here.
McAvinch?
Yes.
Nigel?
Here.
Olson? And Kalshin?
Present.
And building officials here tonight? And village managers.
Okay. In your packet tonight is our agenda for this evening's business. Does anybody have any additions, deletions, or corrections? If not, I entertain a motion to accept the agenda as written.
Just a question, do we want to move back? Begin review of zoning ordinances until we finish up with the other stuff first? Or leave it in the current order?
Yeah. I thought, Larry, I thought the same way about it. I mean...
Move it where?
Well, get rid of all of our other items and then move that to the end.
What is "that"?
The begin review of zoning ordinances. Because if we really begin that review, I mean, who knows how long that could take?
Oh, no, yeah.
Is it a discussion to begin reviewing?
You want to put that D and move everything up, Larry?
Well, that's what I'm asking. How deep are we expecting to get in that discussion?
I was going to see if we could make it as a separate meeting like we discussed in our last meeting.
Okay, so maybe just, so if it's just going to be a discussion about our next steps in relation to that, then we can leave it where it is again.
All right.
So you're saying item A?
I understood that, too.
Yeah.
It was, I was asking about item nine, new business, C, begin review of zoning ordinances, whether we should consider moving that to, towards the end of the meeting instead of where it's at. But if we're just going to discuss how we're going to proceed with that review, then I think that we can leave it where it's at. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. In that case, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Question.
Do you have a second? I didn't hear.
I did.
Okay.
Thanks.
You have to look at me when you do it. Hearing's better, but not 100 percent.
Lee, I barely heard it, too. So a little bit on the...
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, accept the agenda as written. Also in your packet tonight is the minutes from the meeting of August 6, 2019. We need, does anybody have any additions, deletions, corrections, or...
I'll just point one thing out. If anybody received a copy that shows like a dollar sign towards the bottom, just ignore that. We had misprinted something and that was the only thing on the piece of paper, so we threw the paper back in the print. We're recycling.
I'm surprised Rick didn't catch that.
Hey, maybe it didn't show up on my electronic copy. On my computer.
Liz, what did you have on your mind when you were doing those minutes?
Twenty.
Okay.
That's exactly right. A 25 percent pain.
There you go.
That's it.
Go for it, play and wait.
All right.
Is everyone good with these? I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of August 6, 2019.
Second.
Seconded by Rick. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved as written. All right. I see we, are you a visitor, sir?
Actually, I have some comments.
Okay. Any comments you'd like to make?
Yes. Good evening, President Bryce and members of the board. My name's Anthony Randazzo and I'm here on behalf of my neighbor Alex and I live with Falker. They're the ones with the privacy fence. Mr. Falker reached out to me this afternoon because he and his wife are not able to be here tonight, so they want me to extend their apologies for that, but they're away because of their jobs. And basically, this ordinance about this fence, as it was written, prior to the fence being erected, is still not clear. And the residents or the contractors, in my understanding, even the building official doesn't understand it. So what they are asking, what we are asking, is respectfully that the fence structure as it is and as it's been built stay the way it is, allow the variance to go through. I know from the last meeting, there are some people that also didn't have an issue with it. I wasn't at that meeting, I had private meetings with. But they're asking, and we are asking, for the safety of the family, to keep the fence the way it is. It looks very nice. The cost involved in moving it, doing due diligence on figuring out where the fence would need to be moved to, it's unclear. So we're asking that the board grant the variance and allow it to stay.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairperson's comments. I'm sorry to hear that we lost one of our planning commission members, Patty Olson. I, you know, she's, I talked to her a while back and nothing's changed, so that's all I want to tell you. And it's good to be back. You see all these great people here. So that's all I have to say. Anything from the commissioners?
Which one do you want to start?
Start with...
Okay. Yeah, I would like to mention at the last council meeting, it was brought up by one of the trustees, that some residents had noticed a, what they called a negative tone or whatever, from the last planning commission meeting. I did want to pass that on because, although I feel that maybe it's understandable because of the sometimes confrontational way that the council and the planning commission have been dealing with each other, which I think is unfortunate, I'd like to see that change. But I would just like to mention that I absolutely think that we all should be feel, that we are free to speak our minds and state our opinions and views. The only thing I would say is just, we just need to be mindful that we are being recorded, so we just want to make sure we maintain professionalism when we are expressing our views. That's all I wanted to say.
Are you done? I just wanted to comment on Patty, and I know that we're going to go into more of the planning commission later, I believe, right? Yeah. Yeah, I just, I'm sorry what they did to Bob and Patty. And I just wish they would have kept them on to finish out the terms since they weren't full terms to begin with, and then decide upon what their process is. I know I had to go there, interview with township, come back here, interview with planning, and also send in a resume with references. And so if that's the process, so be it. But I just think Bob and Patty should have finished out their term and then we start that process if that's what they want. I just, I felt bad for them watching that. I know how they felt and I feel bad and I'm going to miss Patty.
Rick?
Well, I agree with that. Really, I have nothing else to add at the moment. So.
Okay. How about you?
I would just like to send a quick reminder to complete the joint meeting survey if you haven't. There's a couple of people, won't name names, but please turn yours in. I failed to send a reminder, I should have, the last couple of days, and of course, the holidays snuck up and I was lazy, so I apologize. I will send out a reminder, but just while we're here. And while I'm apologizing, I do want to apologize to Bob and Patty. I'm very sorry for how it went at the council meeting and, you know, I have had a chance to talk to you, but on record, and to Russell, the planning commission, I'm sorry for how it went and I apologize.
Just that, and I apologize, too, if there was anything that I, if I'm, hopefully I'm not one of those that they had issue with on what they watched the tape, because it's not my, as I've showed in the past, I know that our position with the council, we're appointed by them and we are not their watchdog. We are to do our job and pass that along. Obviously, from time to time, we're not happy, but I'm not happy with what I do sometimes myself, so it's not a big deal, but I appreciate that. And again, I'd like to thank, like the village manager, you know, when you give an opportunity to do what I was hoping would occur, and it didn't, and I'm not really sure what my status is and for how long, but I'm here until you tell me I can't be.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay. I don't know. Dale, do you have anything you'd like to interject?
Not at this time.
Okay. All right, we'll move forward. New business, review ordinance, 4.201, green belt walls, fences, side street setback Provide recommendation to ZBA and council.
You're looking at me like I should be saying something.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. I thought that would be how it's going to go. In your package, you did receive the information from the zoning board meeting. Clearly, I stated at that meeting that I believe the ordinance is unclear. However, I think the ordinance is clear, but it's just unclear how you get to where I got it, okay? It's not real easy. It's not simple. You don't open the book and say, this is what you can do here, because that's not written in the book that way. So if you would turn over to page 48 in your zoning ordinance book, that is section 4.201 of the green belt section, it'd be section 2A, where it defines and speaks relative to fences. So what the section says is, residential district functions shall be allowed, provided they be restricted to rear or side yards or no further toward the front of the property than the front building line. So in this particular case, this fence is in a street side yard, which this section doesn't even address such a thing. There is a difference, if you go back to the schedule of regulations, which is on page 27, the schedule of regulations states that the required setbacks for the different districts are the front, side interior, street side, and rear. Okay? So this, where this fence ended up is my interpretation, that is, it ended up in a street side yard, where the fence ordinances, all it addresses is front yard, side yard, rear yard, and is silent on the street side yard. Now, almost every other ordinance that I've ever seen, well, actually, any other ordinance I've ever seen, addresses the street side yard specifically in numerous situations, one of which is fences, another one of which is accessory buildings or accessory structures, and it goes on and on. But if you look through the ordinance here, and I'll take you through my thought process on this, because at first, when I first approached this particular site, by the way, I did receive a complaint, and that's why I went out there to start with. It wasn't that I was driving around and found a fence. Somebody had called and said, wow, you know? This fence is like right on the sidewalk, right there. So I go out and look and my first red tape that I hung on the building said, you can't have a six-foot-high fence in a front yard. Clearly, I hadn't completely read the ordinance here, because the ordinance doesn't address a street side yard as a front yard, as do most other ordinances I have seen. Most other ordinances, you takes a street side yard or a house on a corner lot and treats both sides that face a street as a front. Call it what you want, but the setbacks, the restrictions, all actually parallel each other, whether it's in the front or a street side yard like this is. So I'll continue through how I got where I went with this. Okay, so you go to the definition under the dimensions and standards, it's an R1 district, street side yard required setbacks is 20 feet. So, can you hold it? I'll go through the rest.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Maybe I'll catch it along the way. So that being the case, I always go to definitions when there is always an ambiguity in the ordinance, because a lot of time, definitions will clarify what the ordinance is trying to say. So I go to the definitions section, which is, you'll find on page 82, I went to setbacks, setback line required, a line marking the setback distance.
Page, are you on now?
82. The second section at the top, it says setback line required, a line marking the setback distance from the street or lot lines, which establishes a minimum front, side, or rear open space. Again, street side yards aren't mentioned. Okay? What do you do with a street side yard? What can, it doesn't even fit the definition of setback. So I keep going through this, and my next process is to find the definition of, okay, what is a yard? Let's back up one more step and find a word, what is a yard called? So yards are open spaces on the same level the main building are used, unoccupied and unobstructed from the ground upward, except as otherwise provided in the ordinance. I'll just point it out to you, all the other sections that would apply to this fence, and it's not otherwise provided for in the ordinance. Therefore, this definition that says it's an unobstructed and unoccupied space from the ground up, that's why I rejected that fence to be in that area for that, because the setback regulations under the schedule of regulations requires a 20-foot setback there. And this part here says, if it's a yard, which that is, then it has to be unobstructed from the ground upward. Okay, that's how I got to the point where I denied this. Is that ambiguous? Is that clear to the general public? Heck, no.
No.
And if you don't know how to read ordinances, or you don't know how to chase this stuff around the ordinance to make it make some kind of sense, you're never going to get there from here. I guess I'm fortunate to have 40-some years under my belt that I can, I know where to go to start pulling this stuff out, to see what happens to it. So, that went to the zoning board. The zoning board said, yow, okay? And I don't blame them. This is a lot to be dumping on somebody at a meeting and saying, here it is, now tell me what I can do or can't do. I understand that it wasn't clear, it's not, it's still not real clear to me. I mean, I know how, I know how I got where I went with this. And of course, the out of any ordinance and the out of any part of my job is, if you don't like the way I defined it, or you don't like my interpretation of what this is, that's what the zoning boards are there for. However, I think the bigger picture here is, this ordinance, and we're going to get to this later on, but this ordinance has some definite, I wouldn't want to call them faults.
Flaws.
I would, I would call them.
Flaws.
Yeah, holes, ambiguities, unclear, not precise. This is one of them. I mean, this is, this is really a open gap that I didn't even know was there. I would ask it to be fixed a long time ago. It wasn't until somebody did something that brought to my attention where I started digging into it going, yow, okay? But it's still, what I did was went through the ordinance and I'm convinced and firmly believe that I've made the right decision, that this is not allowed, not allowed use in that area by the definitions that I gave to you, and that if it's allowed, it has to be allowed through the zoning board making some action to allow that to happen. Now, that all being said, oh, by the way, if you finish the yards, they define a front yard. They define a rear yard.
But not the street side yard.
And they define the side yard, but there's no definition of a street side yard.
Yeah, I just put D. Yeah, I put D, street side yard. It's the one we started doing, okay?
You've got, you've got three places.
Yes. Ignore that.
We haven't got into the accessory building ordinance. I haven't even go there yet. Okay? But I can bet that one needs some help, or what needs to happen is, you need to define what is a street side yard. I mean, that by itself would cure probably a lot of stuff.
Which? Go ahead, finish up.
But then there's other parts. Go back to the green belt section, which is on page 48, where it talks about front I mean, that one line could be fixed real simple.
Where is that line? You're referencing it.
Under 2A.
Under 2, oh, yes, okay.
2A, where it says, non-opaque ornamental fences not exceeding four feet in height shall be allowed, should say in front yard or up to the building line. You could add in there, or street side yard. And that would pretty much allow the same, and go with my logic here, it would allow the same fence to be placed in a street side yard as is allowed in a front yard, because in, in reality, if you stand back and look at that property, how many front yards does it have?
Two.
It has the front where it's facing, and it has another front. Because what happens in these cases where you have houses on corner lots, and I looked around the village to see how would it be impacted, how, how a change would fit or not fit. A lot of ordinances have sample figures in their book where they show streets and they actually denote, what's a side yard, what's a side yard adjacent to a street, or what's a street side yard, what's a backyard, what's a front yard, you know, the whole thing. And really, what it is to do is to protect, not necessarily the house on the corner, it's to protect the house that may be directly behind that house on the corner, because you immediately have somebody else's front yard.
Yeah.
More often than not, and I looked at all of them, you don't have subject business streets where they're row with the road. They're all coming from every different direction. You've got a million corner lots, but almost every corner lot has a house that has a front yard directly behind it. So I think it's appropriate, and I know the Falkers are not going to want to hear what I'm saying to you tonight, but it's totally appropriate that a street side yard is treated, at least for the, at least for the required portion of it, be treated as a front yard.
Similar like a front yard, yeah.
For consistency on the people who live on that street. Yes. So, I mean, that's, again, that's how many, many other ordinances address it. Some, some places, the fences are treated a little differently than some other parts, but just as a blanket statement, that street side yard is, for lack of a better term, a front yard to somebody else, leaves the house behind. It adds continuity to it.
Well, that would make that this request for this, this fence, which is six feet tall, be incorrect by itself.
Correct.
Well, except that in the same page, one D says fences shall be firmly and safely established physical barriers and not more than six feet in height, which may be fully or partially obscuring. Now, the next paragraph says four feet in height. What's going on in there?
You have a six footer in a rear or side yard. It's a four footer in the front, and I'm suggesting it be a four footer in the street side. That would make that fence...
Improper.
Improper. Now, that doesn't mean that the zoning board can't allow it to stay there, and that if it gets destroyed at some important time, it can't be replaced.
Right.
But I would suggest that you look very carefully at granting such a variance. If what would happen is, since the, I've determined that it's in violation, that's why I went to the zoning board by itself. If the zoning board determines that it can stay there, then there are conditions by which they have to grant that. The state law provides that there must be practical difficulties that are attached to it. There's got to be a reason that that fence is there and not where it should have been. Not just that it costs money to move it, not just that everybody's happy with it. Those are not, those are not standards for which a variance should be granted. That doesn't mean it can't be. It just means you leave yourself open to potential litigation. Every zoning board case is a case that is held on its own merit. In other words, you don't necessarily set a precedence by a zoning case.
Right.
However, you want to be careful if you grant too many, because then that tells me there's something wrong with the ordinance. So...
Well, but in this case, the ordinance was, was and is very unclear.
So we understand how to fix it going forward, but what do we do now?
And also, the zoning board is looking for what the planning commission thinks, which is somewhat out of the ordinary. Dale and I talked about this.
Yeah, I mean, yes.
For a zoning board to hand something back to the planning commission to help them make a decision is like totally out of the ordinary. That's, that's...
And if you make a change to the zoning ordinance, or recommend a change to the zoning ordinance, it really has no effect on the ZBA case.
Right.
You know, you can say that you want to make a change, and, and you can say that there are some, either inconsistencies or lack of clarity, but I guarantee you that every zoning ordinance in the state of Michigan meets that criteria.
Oh, yeah.
It is not, never easy to deal with these things. You can't deal with every situation and it takes interpretation. So when you're looking at, at what can be done, his interpretation I support, and what he has said I support. And that's what the criteria is. Now, if, if you find the practical difficulty to allow a variance, then that's, that's the choice. But your actions should not affect them.
Yeah, and that's not a decision on planning commission to grant or not grant the variance.
No, no.
Correct, but just suggests.
And it would be, I would suggest to you that it would not be appropriate for the planning commission to even comment on that.
On what?
On what the, what was down and the areas of appeal, and what action they took, either way.
Well, then what was the request from the ZBA? The ZBA was to evaluate this.
Not to evaluate.
Not the variance.
It was to evaluate the existing ordinance with the case. It wasn't the existing ordinance, because we all know what it says, it's how does it interpret with the case? I mean, that was the request that I perceived from council. They sent it back for us to evaluate case, together, you know, the two pieces together.
Okay.
The motion?
I've been waiting to ask questions, so.
The motion?
Were you asked to take the floor?
No.
Okay, thank you. We're going to do it professionally. If you want to speak, you ask the chairman, can I speak at this time? Thank you.
Can I speak at this time?
Okay. Now, my question is, which I, this whole deal, years ago, when I was first on the planning commission, the planning commission was the ZBA. Then, back in 2008, is it, Dale? They put the ZBA into the village council.
That's before my time.
Okay. But the question I have, normally, the ZBA, like if we were the ZBA, we make a decision on it. We make a recommendation. It goes to the village council for the final decision. So now, you got the village council that is the ZBA. I assume, is the ZBA final? I don't know where the document says, or does that recommendation go back to the village council to be approved?
If you have, by state statute, if you have a zoning board of appeals, it's a separate, autonomous... autonomous, functioning body. The council can't change what they do. I can't change what they do. If you don't like what was determined because of a ZBA action, if you, when you have a zoning board of appeals, your only recourse by state law is you have twenty-one days after the action to file a suit in circuit court.
Okay. So where does it stay in the ordinance that the ZBA has that right? I'm just asking...
The law doesn't say that, but they may here.
Well, no, I think in general, but we can check on that.
Bill, do you know where that would be stated at?
In the zoning enabling act.
Okay. Which is the one that changed the ZBA from the planning commission to the village council.
Now, that would've been an internal function just being done.
State law allows...
I don't agree with that, because we were at a meeting, and it was, we were the ZBA, and we were told that we are not the ZBA. The planning, or village council is the ZBA. So we wouldn't have changed that unless there was a law that states that.
If I might.
Go ahead.
The, um, the enabling act allows the ZBA to be set up in different ways. One of the, one of the ways is by a separate autonomous body. It can be set up as the council of the government, of the, be setting as the ZBA. And in that case, when they're setting in that form, they're not council members anymore, they're ZBA members. Um, I don't, I have never seen a planning commission set as a ZBA.
No.
And if it was something that was allowed years ago, maybe it was. But that, I've never seen that.
Okay.
And in any instance, this is typically an action that the main body of government can make a decision on. And when they make the decision, then it goes to that form.
Okay. Which is, yes, Bob?
I, I was at that meeting, and I took it that the ZBA, they tabled it for information, but I thought the very question was, "We would like the planning commission to review the fencing ordinance and make recommendations on changes to the ordinance, not recommendations to the ZBA." I mean, I don't know how...
But pertaining strictly to ordinance.
We can justify that.
Okay.
Go ahead, Bill.
The motion was made by Eschman, supported by Buttsy, to table the decision to allow the planning commission to review current ordinances related to fences and setbacks, and come back before the zoning board of appeals with findings. So that's what the motion said.
Yeah, we have it in our...
Go ahead, Larry. Okay. Um, yeah, I took it the same way as Bob's, and as what Bill just brought in, is that we sent it over for the planning commission to review the ordinances. But in relation to the, the ordinance itself, I would like to get back to the topic of clarity within this ordinance, and I would like to point out that on page, I think it's forty-eight, section one D talks about fences, but the section just previously, section one C, talks about walls. And it says specifically, "Walls shall be constructed in a nice and way, blah, 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 and where required shall be located approximately on the lot line." And there's nothing stated about fences, where they should be placed or not. But it clearly shows that walls should be on the lot line, fences, it doesn't specify. If we technically take the same position on fences in general with the setback requirements, your fence can't be on the lot line, 'cause it has to be according to the regulations. Um, in R one, ten feet back from the side interior, and twenty feet back from the side street, five, uh, and thirty-five feet back from the rear. So I, I...
Page is that?
This is on page twenty-seven.
Thank you.
So this is where it's, there's, it's, it's not clear, because in, in almost every case, fences in our property owners and properties around the town are approximately on the lot lines. So that's not consistent with any of these setbacks in most cases already, and I don't think anybody's ever been called in being in violation of ordinance for when they didn't have a sided street lot and called that. So it's, it's, to me, I think that's another area where we would need to clarify, are fences allowed on the lot line, and is there a special case that we need to add in the ordinance for side street setbacks, as opposed to just in general? Because I think in general, fences should follow the same recommendation as walls as being allowed on the lot lines.
To be honest with you, my interpretation of setbacks are for buildings. I never, ever recall anything that states that a fence is a building. So I don't understand it.
Six-foot-high fences are under the building code as a structure.
Okay. When you say high fences...
Six feet.
You read in here, you can have up to a six-foot fence. Okay? His fence is six foot, correct?
Mm-hmm. Well, I didn't measure, but it's someplace close to that, 'cause it's taller than me.
I mean, and then you talk about lot line. I've got photos I took. If you look right down the street from his fence, there's fences all along the front yard setback, right on the sidewalk. You go down Church Street, across from the Baptist Church, there's a fence right up that far away from the sidewalk.
What church?
Go ahead.
Um, I believe those are covered in regulation two A, where it says, "Fences shall be allowed." Uh, it says, "Non-opaque ornamental fences not exceeding four feet in height shall be allowed in front yard and up to the front building line." So it does allow fences in your front yard, as long as they are not over four feet, and they are not opaque, and they are basically ornamental in nature. That's, that's according to this resident. I don't know how many of the fences you're talking about fit that category or not, but I don't see too many places where they have a six-foot-high privacy fence in the front line.
Okay, right now on Church Street, the sec, at the corner of Oakwood and Church Street, there's a house there, the second house down, you got the corner house, then there's two houses tight together, got a common driveway in. They have a solid fence that extends out to the front lot, yard line.
That one would technically be in violation of our ordinances, then.
But I mean, you're gonna sit here and tell a guy he's gotta tear down his fence when you go anywheres in the village and you see fences on the lot line? That's just my own opinion on that, but, oh, go ahead, Rick.
Um, in Royal Oak, I'm very familiar with Royal Oak, 'cause my wife and I grew up there, and I spent a lot of time there. And every block, there's, uh, four homes that have, um, really, the front on, on both sides, both streets. And it's very common there for no fence necessarily on the, what's the front, which is where the driveway is, but fences right up to the sidewalk on the side street. Just, they're everywhere. And, and that's what we're talking about here.
Can I ask?
No, then finish.
When you're done, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Are you open for that? On that, in that case, 'cause I had mentioned that earlier, where you have rows of houses on blocks, you have this block where all the houses face this street, and like East Detroit or East Point's set up this way, the next block over, all the houses face this way.
Meaning what?
But you have a intermediate street that goes between the two, so my question to you is, are those houses back to back? Or is there a side street where there's a bunch of fronts coming up to the back of a house?
Not sure what you mean.
Yeah, that's why I need to, just drive raceboard.
Yep, let me get you some markers.
Just while they're doing that, Mr. Chairman, if I might, you, you need to be very careful when you're looking at the zoning ordinance particularly, to cross-reference things like fences and walls and all of that, because each one of these things is written for a specific reason and a specific purpose for where they are. So whereas a wall and a fence may be, there may be logical reasons for them to be different distances, different setbacks. So when you, when you try to, to make the two of them together, you have to be very cautious of that.
I, I think that's understood. I was merely pointing out that it's, it's, adds the ambiguity, because walls explicitly state they're okay on the lot line, but fences, it's not clear.
That's one of the, one of the characteristics of a zoning ordinance, is that they have specific regulations with specific situations. Um, what Bill is talking about is trying to get something so it's clear when you're looking at it, which you're applying it to.
Many ordinances have tables that look like this, so you have houses here and houses here. And if these are backyards facing each other, then they treat this side that may be adjacent to a street as a side yard.
Right.
Other ordinance, well, even in the same ordinance, is if you have another block where this house fronts this way and this house fronts that way, this becomes the second front yard. That's why I was asking the question. When you bring up Royal Oak, the layout in those subdivisions are typically different than they are in old planted lot subs. A lot of your older planted lot will have a house that faces this way, and the one directly behind it faces that way. So you have a, you end up with a front, and the ordinance wants to treat this side yard as a front, because it's in this guy's front yard. In this case, they're both sides. They don't end up a front to a back, or they don't end up a front to a side. So that's why I was, when you're going through your definition, you say, "A lot of them have fences that come right out." A lot of them are treated as side yards, because they don't have a house facing the street behind them.
And we would refer to that as street side yard when we're doing this. Is that the right definition?
In this ordinance, this is a side yard.
That's a side, but the, on the other side.
But it's a street side yard.
Right.
This, this, and under your ordinance, it's still treated that way.
Right, but we want to make it clear that it's a street side yard.
For the fence.
Okay.
So what, what I'm talking about, what I see there a lot, is here's the front of the house, and, and the driveway's on this side.
Right.
And so there's a fence that goes here, right up to there, and then goes here. So it doesn't get into the front yard, what you'd consider the front yard. It goes from the corner of the house, back on there, and usually that way, too.
Okay, but what's this, is this house facing this way?
And the same thing here.
Yeah, see, in that case, that ordinance is gonna treat both of these as side yards.
So in our case, that we're talking about...
You have...
It's over there.
This situation where you have a, a backyard against somebody else's side yard and front, so you got...
Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay.
That, that's, I thought I heard what you were saying, I just wanted to clarify it.
And I needed to see what your...
And in this case, Tony is the, um, it's the second front yard for Tony.
Okay. I don't know who lives there.
Rick, are you satisfied with the explanation?
Well, that part, I, can I ask another question?
Certainly.
Okay. So in part D of one, on page forty-eight, green belts, walls, and fences. Starts out talking about green belts, then it goes to walls, and then fences in the first section here, general requirement. And in D, it says, "Fences can be six feet in height, not more than six feet in height." And then the very next paragraph under regulation, it says they can, "Non-opaque ornamental fences not exceeding four feet in height should be allowed in the front yard and up to the front building line." So this apparently refers only to fences in the front yard.
This section is referring to this area here.
There's another section that refers to that.
For sight, for sight distance. It also, if, if the neighbor had a driveway, it would also require a clear space here for sight distance to get in and out. Lot of ordinances have that sight distance. It's a twenty-five foot, one part of the hypotenuse, twenty-five foot in the other, and you have to keep clear out of that area.
That's a separate place in here. What I'm talking about is on page forty-eight, part two, regulation, part A, and that, it does, that's now where it talks about the twenty-five foot setback.
But D does. You, you reference D, right? I thought I was answering D.
Top of page forty-nine.
One D.
That's not in there either. It's in other place someplace.
It's on page forty-nine, right?
Forty-nine. Yeah, that's very...
It's within the same section as the one you're looking at as A. It's, it's section D, and there talks about that. That's what Bill's talking about.
Well, yeah. I knew I read that somewhere.
See, I think, when you take a look at this ordinance in the overall, when you're talking about residential, it says the very first word, "In all residential districts." If you go to another section, it says, "In all residential districts." If you look at this whole section in general, it isolates the residential out from the rest, commercial, or other types, but not residential. So that's just another observation I picked as I was, as you read through ordinances, you gotta read what it applies to. And since it's clear that in residential districts is, you know, you pull those out and deal with them, the rest really had to do with site plan approval and commercial property. But so...
Okay.
Larry, you're there.
Okay. Um, yeah, and I, I would like to also say that the sections C and D about walls and fences, those are under the general requirements, so that doesn't mean that that's, uh, you know, covers every aspect of fences. Those are just the general requirements, and then they get more specific when you get down to section two, which is the regulations. I think that's partly what Bill is trying to point out there, is that the general requirement says no more than six feet in all cases, but there's also some additional restrictions within the front yards and things like that. Um, I would like to mention that at the council meeting, one of the, and I think it was a valid point, one of the points that was brought up that I think that we need to think about as a, um, topic to provide some feedback back to the council, is there was concerns about the fact that that fence is literally right at the edge of the concrete. There is no space between the edge of the concrete for the sidewalk and where that fence starts. Um, and the question there is, there was concerns raised about, what about snow removal equipment getting through there and being able to, to make sure that we can keep the sidewalks clear and safe for pedestrian traffic? There was also questions about bicycles, where the handlebars could potentially extend past the edge of the sidewalk when they're coming down there, and that fence could be an obstruction for that sort of traffic. Um, so the question, one of the questions that was raised is how close should a fence be allowed to a sidewalk? I think that's something that we could discuss and maybe see if we can come up with some kind of a consensus or conclusion, or some sort of, um, suggestion we could provide back to the village on what our thoughts would be, whether there should be some required distance back from a side, uh, from the sidewalk in particular, as opposed to just the lot line?
Yes.
The, uh, and I agree. I think there's several things that need to be changed. I looked at several other fence ordinances, and they're very clear-cut. There's, there's not all of this jumping all over the place kind of thing. But again, the council asked us to look at it, for us to tell them that, no, we think the fence needs to be moved back, because it's not C, which it's not, and there is issues with it being along the side. But that, I can't believe that's the planning commission's responsibility to tell the village council, "You need to tell them to move that fence back." I don't, that's not our job. I think what, I mean, I, I agree with what Bill has said, and maybe let the council know that we've reviewed it, we've listened to the building officials' comments, and we agree with his...
Summation.
...determination, yes, of the, of the problem, and, and agree that we need to sit down and redo the, the fencing ordinance. Needs to definitely be redone. There, there's a lot of good ones out there that are simple and uncomplicated. It's a page with diagrams on it. It's, you know, they're pretty darn simple. But I think we need to let the council know that we've listened to Bill's review of it, we agree with his interpretation of all the things that he has said, and move on. Go to work it, write in a new one. That, that's my thought.
Yes.
Um, somewhere in here, you pointed out, Bill, that it talks about... Somewhere in here, you pointed out, Bill, that it talks about fences being along the lot lines. I don't see it right now, but it seems different. And, but, so if the lot line is right along the edge of the sidewalk, or vice versa, sidewalk right along the edge of the lot line, then the guidelines would be that the fence can be along the lot line, is that not true?
Correct.
Except the front. And here it deals, once again, back to regulation two A, it deals with non-opaque ornamental fences not exceeding four feet in height to be allowed, it should say in the front yard, but it just says shall be allowed in the front yard and up to the front building line. So from what I can tell here, this fence is only out of, out of order, outside of the guidelines, in this piece that's in the front yard. It's too tall. It should be only four feet and not six feet. But the rest of it.
That's not in the front yard.
Isn't this the front yard here?
Yes, it is, but it's lined up with the face of the road, which is your front building line.
Right, that's what I'm saying. That piece of fence.
That piece of fence fits.
That piece of fence, if there's anything wrong with it, it appears to be too tall according to this. It says not exceeding four feet in height.
Up to the front building line, that means from the street to the front building line. Once you get to the front building line, it's now a side yard.
Oh, well then, there isn't anything wrong with that that I can see.
Well, not where you just pointed that out. I still think there's something wrong with the rest of the fence over on the side street twenty, twenty feet back, but.
Well, except somewhere it says in here that fences can be on the lot line.
I didn't see that.
We're, it's actually. Didn't we see, didn't you point that out?
I pointed out that it says walls may, should be.
Walls.
But that's a section C. Fences, it doesn't say.
Masonry or like material.
I see that.
It's, it's.
So walls and not fences.
And that's, I think that's.
Right, well.
But that, that whole section.
All right, Dale, you, you got arms.
Well, the ordinance provides, as Bill has pointed out, that the side yard setback is twenty feet. So regardless of what other things talk about where fences can be in those particular situations, in the situation of this applicant, the requirements of the ordinance are that it be back twenty feet, and it's not. It is virtually on the lot line, yeah. I mean, it, he showed you in the list of regulations, a twenty feet is required, twenty feet setback. He's asking for a variance from that requirement. And irrespective of how you change this ordinance in the future, that's what he was faced with when he constructed that item.
And just a reminder, they're looking for findings of fact according to the motion, not a recommendation on what to do with the specific variance, but just findings of fact.
Tony's.
Tony, go ahead.
First of all, I would like to clarify that when I say at the very beginning what council's looking for, review, not revision, which is exactly what they're looking for. Second of all, on page eighty describes lot line and the definition of it, so we know what lot line is and where that falls. But it doesn't give a street.
It doesn't give a street side, yeah.
But it gives every other.
Right.
So in the context of what we have in front of us with what we're given, that's what is defined as.
It does define a side, but it doesn't define a street side.
That's right.
Right.
That's why I didn't even bring it up to you, because it isn't there.
Well, they were asking what the lot line definition was, and that's what we have to work with.
So.
Yes, Rick.
So it appears that if people had built a wall, masonry apparently, or light material, so that would be okay on the lot line, right up against the sidewalk, but not a fence. Doesn't that seem like an inconsistency to the Rusty folks? It sure does to me.
Yeah, but that's why we have to start revising this, that's why it was brought to our attention.
I'm just thinking in the context of this issue, but.
I guess that's why we're gonna be tackling the ordinances, that we need to fix these issues that we have in, in the ordinances. We know that there's issues with it, we know we have to correct them.
Correct.
Okay, anybody else?
May I ask Bill one question? Bill, if that, rather than a fence, was considered to be a wall, how would you interpret our ordinances if that was, structure was constructed as a wall instead of a fence?
Same way, and the reason I do it the same way is because in residential districts, walls aren't defined. Therefore, it's a structure, therefore, it's not allowed from the ground up per the setback requirements. I wouldn't, I wouldn't treat it different if it was a wall versus a fence, because it defines what a fence is in residential districts. There's no real residential district explanation for the street-side yard for walls. Therefore, the street-side yard is the issue, and that's, as Dale had said, the guy's asking for a variance to the twenty-foot setback.
I mean, it does state, talk about walls under the general requirements, and defines walls under the general requirements. It doesn't call anything out specifically related to residential about walls, but it does define what walls are allowed, how they're allowed to be built in, in the general.
And it's probably silent on street-side yards there, too, right?
All right.
So I'll go back to what Lee just said, we need to fix.
It's broke, we need to fix it.
But clearly, I've traced back for you the steps I made to deny this fence, and that's what's being dealt with, or needs to be dealt with, so.
Okay. Dale, you.
Just, I just wanted to reiterate, you can't confuse doing, adding different sections together and say, okay, it says it this here and it says it this here, because as Bill has said, when it talks in the regulation, in residential districts, now that's a whole new criteria that narrows it, and you have to look at what that says. The general provision of what a fence can be doesn't apply here unless it says it does.
Okay. I can also, what could we tell the village council besides what Bill has gone through thoroughly, and what else, what else can we tell the council? Now, there's nothing that we can.
Will you recommend that we don't, correct?
Well, I think that what this gentleman has suggested to you is that you have reviewed the matter, you believe that there are adjustments that you're going to look at making, but that you have heard the interpretation that Bill has made of the ordinance as it stands, and you support that interpretation would be an appropriate thing to say to council.
Okay.
So essentially, after review, our finding of fact is that Bill's interpretation.
You're not finding fact.
Well, that's what they asked for.
Well.
Well, you can't, you, this isn't a finding of fact when you're interpreting this ordinance.
Okay, after review, we find that Bill's interpretation is consistent with the way the current ordinance is.
Yeah.
I guess that would be it.
Action to the zoning board of appeals and not council, they would have to be the same people.
I mean, 'cause I know personally that I had issues more with the fence, but it's neither here nor there. It's not in the ordinance now, and I don't have the authority anyplace along the line to tell people they gotta do this or do that on this situation. It's the council, there's the ZBA, and I agree with Bill's review of it, that it, what he suggested to them, now they got a decision to make with that, with his review of whether or not it's, they wanna give them the variance or not.
Right.
I don't know what else we can do with that part of it. I know what else.
Do we need an official motion to state what our recommend, or our review is found or anything, or just a consensus?
Just say.
I think it would be appropriate for you to make a statement to the ZBA, because they've asked you to do that.
That's what he just, so that was the statement, whatever Larry just said.
Liz.
So somebody has to officially make a motion that I suppose say we find.
Go ahead.
Okay, now I'll make a motion that we report back to the ZBA that after review, we have found that Bill's interpretation of the situation is consistent with our existing ordinances, and we further found that a review of the ordinances is warranted.
I don't even, all right, do we need that last sentence?
I'll support that.
I would like to see that, because I think it shows that it's not clear and needs some work, and I think we both need to acknowledge that to do the work, right? If they're saying it's not clear, sending it to us, and we're saying it's not clear, then, right?
I thought Bill said. Yes, we find it is consistent what Bill said, but we think it needs review, the ordinance needs review also.
So what I have is that the planning commission would like to report back to the ZBA that after review, the building officials' interpretation is consistent with the ordinance, a further review and update of the ordinance is warranted.
Well, can we, can we add that we don't believe any action is warranted until this is.
No.
I don't think that would be.
That's not our.
At this point.
Because it's so confusing, is what I'm saying.
Can I respond? Right now, the issue has been tabled. When an issue is taken to the zoning board of appeals, it stays any more enforcement action until a decision is made by the zoning board of appeals.
So that's already covered?
It's already stayed, yeah. Action is stayed when there's a field process, in process. So until the zoning board makes her decision, nothing's tabled. From an enforcement perspective.
Did anybody support him?
I did.
Okay.
Okay. Do we do a roll call vote on that, or just yea and nay?
Whichever.
Nothing?
Yea and nay, it doesn't involve money.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Open council, open commissioner position discussion, I think. Yes, sir.
Could we come up with either a group, or a separate committee, or somebody to go through this fencing ordinance, or are we just gonna wait and do it when we do the zoning board, or the review of the zoning ordinances?
Right, but what we'll do sometimes, Bob, we'll appoint like three people, okay, that do a lot of the meat and potatoes, and then it's, so we don't spend five meetings going through it. We have a group of people that do the research and that, and then present it at the planning commission meeting. Yes, Bill?
This is point of order, we're on B, which is open commissioner positions, not the.
Begin review.
Begin review, but when we get to the begin review, I would like to offer a suggestion to you.
I think Bob was saying he was still on E.
Right, I just was, I just wasn't sure if we needed to complete that, but I agree, we can do.
Cover that and see.
Yeah, gotcha, yep. Yeah, I got it.
Anything else you'd like to add? All right.
No, go ahead, Lee.
So back to open commissioner position discussion. I know, Melanie, you had something that you wanted to mention about it.
I did. I already said at the beginning, or was I supposed to say something about it?
Anybody have any suggestions and ideas for that?
I, I can restate what I said at the beginning, that I think that the commissioners we have now, Patty and Bob, should continue until the term is complete, because they weren't even doing full terms, and then a process should be in place. I'm confused on who sets up the process, because council has done two different things at this point. So is it planning commission that sets up the process, or is it council?
They do, they make the recommendation for the people to be on.
I'm talking the process, I'm not, I'm not saying the yea and nay of they're on it. The process.
President appoints and council approves.
I know that part. The process.
That's the process.
Okay, but with me, I had to go to a village meeting and be interviewed, and also say how I want to be back on it, and then I had to come here and interview with you guys again, and I had to bring in a resume with recommendation letters. The other person, who was council member Scornica, sent an email in, and the subject line it said, "I'm interested" at five o'clock of the day of the cutoff. So what's the process? Is it, "I'm interested," email, or is it resume with, you know, recommendation letters?
There, it's very inconsistent. The process is the president appoints and the council approves, that is the process. What all the stuff behind that is, is depends on the moment.
Well, we can't depend on the moment.
Exactly. That's the discussion.
While I'm discussing, so who does it?
I was just gonna say to you that when we had this discussion at the village council meeting, I suggested to them that give me an opportunity to review the whole process and what we're going through and what steps we're taking, and if there's some suggestions I want to make to the council with, to clarify how that will go and what steps it'll go, including the potential of developing a list of future opening dates for different committee appointments, that I'd like to see that done. And when I'm looking at all that, I'll look at the different things that you're talking about, but the, as it's, as it sits now, and by statute and ordinance, the president makes recommendations, and the council accepts or rejects those recommendations. That is the only thing that's required. There's no requirement of any of our things that it go to the planning commission, or that the planning commission review. They can make comments, and like you did before with these two, you made a recommendation in a motion that these two people be reappointed.
Yeah, I sent two letters of recommendation to.
Yeah, so, and.
Okay, hold on.
I'll have to look at that, all of the process, and Liz will help me do that, and we'll look at what all is in place now, and if there's clarification that needs to be done, or a restated in some way, then I'll make that recommendation to the council, and they'll make the decision, because they are the one that makes the final one.
Larry, you were.
Yes, I just wanted to say that, yeah, Tonya is correct that it's the president that nominates to fill the vacancies or appointments, and the council consents or approves those. I think that how the president comes up with her nominees, that's, I think, more relevant to what Melanie was bringing up, is how do we, is there a process to develop a pool of nominees for the president to consider? And I think that's, that's the question, and I think that's something that is more the village president, in part to decide how she wants to develop her pool of resources, possibly in conjunction with the village manager, in order to come up with, how do I get a list of nominees to pick from when I'm looking to fill an appointment? Am I off base, Tony?
No, and I think consistency would be that you rely on the planning commission, who has full knowledge of that, and you look for the recommendation, and then you move from there. I mean, that's, that has been the history, whether it's something different or not in the future, but it's been pretty consistent.
Rick, you, you were.
So two things. Is, is the, is the process then the same for reappointment of existing plan commissioners as it would be for finding someone to fill a vacant position? That's one question. It seems like that should be a different process, but, and the other question is, I'm not clear on why there was a reappointment question if Bob and Patty had not finished out the terms that they were appointed to. I don't, I don't understand, if there was more time for each of you, why was there?
There wasn't, June first was the end.
As I, as I understand it, their terms ended up at the end of last year. No?
No, they each were filling in for.
They each were filling in for Dave Van Dus and Charlie Creashen, and they were finishing their terms.
Okay.
Which ended on June 1st of this year.
So this is actually late.
Correct.
It's not, because what you folks talked about is that you wished they would be allowed to finish the terms that they were appointed to fill. That's what I heard several times tonight.
Melanie, did you mean they haven't filled a full three-year term?
Correct.
Is that what you kind of meant?
Yeah.
That's how I interpreted it.
We could raise that point at the meeting, is that they haven't even filled a full term, and yet, some council members were stating that the problem on planning commission is people who are in the position for 40 years, and I did not understand how that was relevant.
So, you would have been reappointed in Patty for a two or three-year term.
They're all three-year.
Okay, that started June 1st, or started last Monday. Is that correct? So how you guys?
Well, I would, I think you would've went back to the original June date, and retroactive from that date forward.
That's what I assumed, yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Yes, um, so, and this goes into what you were saying. I just, I really, really hope, because I'm, I'm seeing red right now, I'm really hoping that it wasn't because the council was being vindictive to me, that I had to jump through all those hoops when there wasn't a process. But all of a sudden, there became a process for Melanie. So I, I really don't understand now, when, if it was just you appointing, and them saying yea or nay, not coming to two meetings, interviewing, getting letters of recommendations, that process was just for Melanie, it appears. And I just want to make sure that's on record, because that is just not a good position for council to be in legally. And it's also not a good position for them to bring up age, and how long someone's been on council, or, I'm sorry, on commission. Ageism in this day and age, that'll get you a lawsuit. So, I just wanted to put that on record.
Can I respond real quick? I just want to respond real quick. I would say that I think that council was not following the correct legal process in, in some cases, when it came back to some past things that they did, in regards to your commission, because on more than one occasion, council has tried to make motions to directly appoint people to committees that were created by the village, including a planning commission and another appointment. And it was pointed out that that is not legal according to the general law of Village Act, and that it is fully the president's, village president's responsibility to make nominations to fill appointments, not the council's to fill appointments directly. So I think that they were not necessarily following proper process or legal process in the past necessarily. I just wanted to point that out, that that has been brought to attention, and, you know, we have stopped them from taking that practice.
Yes, Rick.
So my first question was, is there a different process for reappointments of existing council, or, not council, commission members, compared to filling a vacancy when someone's gone?
Turned reader.
And, and does anybody have?
There's no difference.
It's always the same.
Once, once your term is done, is done. You have no vested right or in, in another term. So each one is, stands by itself.
He's not here. We have a person.
You can take over, you're our secretary.
And I agree with that, that, you know, at first, when I was sitting at the meeting, you know, I, I know I was fuming, I didn't even speak well as much as I would've, and it's probably a good thing, because I was definitely bothered by it. But initially, I, I got it, you know, that there needs to be, there needs to be a process so that the council knows that there's people out there that might be interested in planning commission, or any other committees that they have, and, and I know Dale brought it up, that he would be more than glad to work on that process. So I, you know, why aren't we just, with that, we're recommending that the, the village manager, in conjunction with the president of the council, because she's appointing it, making the appointment for, there need, but there does need to be a review process for, like, people coming up with their term coming to an end. There needs to be some kind of a review process so that you're not getting rid of somebody that's well-educated in the planning commission, because we all know that it's a lot more complicated than the average citizen out there has even a hint of the complication of it. But, that review needs to be.
It's Lee's.
That review, I think, I believe is done by the planning commission, and sent to, as it was done with Lee, with a letter, to recommend that that move along. And the council took the position that they wanted to see more applicants. And I believe they used the word qualified. That's when I started to vibrate a little bit, that they were looking for qualified applicants, and that's when I took it personal.
Yeah.
And, and right, wrong, or indifferent, I generally control myself much better with that, but I've been away from the business too long. But I think that's the process that it needs, truly needs to be. So that when a term comes to an end, we did, the planning commission do exactly what you did. You sent letters to the council. The council goes to, or the president goes to the manager and says, you know, "Do you have people that are interested?" Then it's her responsibility and her problem to review them people, to see if they, she wants to make either a different appointment, or make a reappointment, or interview a new person, and, but that's her responsibility, it has nothing to do with us, I, I believe that. As much as I would like to say, I, you know, when mine comes up, I can just stay, as much as I think, I made some comment about as long as I'm on earth. I don't know where the hell that comes from. That, that's what I think is the correct process, and I, and I think it's kind of laid out already, it just needs to be set up and followed.
I don't use a lot.
And I, and I think that was the concern. I think the recommendation of having a list is wonderful. I think the discussion was had, and the choice was made, and the recommend, or, I'm sorry, the appointment was made, based on educated decisions, in, in having a chance to sit here and talk with you, and having, you know, nobody else interested at the time. Going forward, I think it's a great idea. As we know, that was done with Melanie. She was told that she could not be reappointed. It was put out, and nobody else responded, and Melanie was able to keep the position that she was qualified for.
Yeah, no, 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 I had to jump through hoops.
But what I'm saying is, is it didn't work. We've tried this, it didn't work. So we're trying it again, at the loss of now somebody stepping down that was a qualified applicant. So something needs to change in order to not lose qualified people, that clearly this is not working. So, you know, this is kind of a great time for us to say, what is a good way to get applicants out there available to the person who appoints, and with knowledge of the body to know. Okay.
Yes, Liz.
And this might be a little bit out of order, but I have noticed, when we put our government and staff on the website, for the council in particular, we put how long their term is and when it expires. I currently do not do that for the planning commission, and that might be one step in the process, is putting when the commissioners' terms expire. It's on your rosters, but it's not posted on the website.
I think it'd be great.
Does anybody have an objection to that?
No. I don't have an objection, no.
Okay, so I think we have consensus that Liz could do that.
Well, just, if you will, just let me look at it, and I'll give recommendations to you. But that's very likely what we're gonna do. It's really not something that we need action from anybody to do. We can make that on our website, and I, that's one of the things I intend to do, is that all of the commissions and the terms that they have will be on there. But it's more than that that we need to look at. We need to make sure that we want, we want to keep doing the steps that we're doing.
Well, some steps, apparently not all the steps.
Yeah, no, no, yeah, there have been no proper steps. It's been illegal, and it, it was incredible, is all I can say, and it continues to be strange, but, you know, it is what it is.
That's, go ahead, Rick. One more.
So the question is, is there, other than the village manager nominates, and the, and the council decides yea or nay, is there any other structure in Michigan law, or the, you know, the Planning Enabling Act, that recommends how to do this? Anybody know?
No.
There is none.
Okay. So we make it up?
But that doesn't mean that you can't have your own set of ways that you deal with it. Everybody has different ways that they deal with it. The one, the standard is, the president nominates, the council accepts or rejects. That is, that's what you have to do. How you get to that is everybody's business.
Tanya, my question is too, is it, does it mean if you've got 40 years in, your chances of being replaced are real high?
Absolutely not. When you are a qualified applicant, I would love to recommend you.
All right, thank you.
But, that's what I was getting at initially, if we, why, why can't the village manager and the president of the council set down a procedure of advertising for applicants for all these different positions, when, when, when there's a vacancy, they look at that, they got a chance to look at the list, pick one or two and interview them, and then, if there's a reappointment, a letter comes from the planning commission to the president, she reviews it, and if she wants to make that suggestion to reappoint them, or go to the list, that's their choice. So what's the problem?
That would be fine if it worked that way. That, I think that's great.
That's what I'm saying, what, that's, we're suggesting it to be done.
Yeah, I mean, that would be great.
I don't get what the problem is.
The problem is from that point, not to that point.
Right.
We have a problem to that point.
Yeah.
We're all in agreeance to that point.
We have nothing that we can do about what the council does with those recommendations. There's not a darn thing that we can do about it.
That's correct.
Besides prove your ability is to, to job that you have.
Even that.
Don't make faces at the camera.
Okay. Rick, real short, and we gotta move on.
Is there any list? And if there's, if there was a list, but no one was interested, then do you advertise more, or you just say, okay? It's kind of like when we have a part of our meeting open to public comments, and there are no public members here. But the opportunity's there. Is that, would that be equivalent to, if there's, if we have a continuing or periodic?
I guess I look at it this way, if, are all the terms June?
Yes.
Okay. In December, you run an ad for people interested in being on the planning commission. So when you get to the last meeting in May, she can present a recommendation, and they vote on it, and we won't have this issue of reappointing out of phase, so. That's good. Could be a recommendation. Okay. We're gonna move on.
Yay.
Begin review of zoning ordinances.
Discussion.
Bill.
You go first.
Actually, I thought I'm gonna defer to Dale, because him and I had this discussion, and I think we're pretty much on the same page and in agreement. Having gone through this issue with the fence that we just discussed, and I don't believe with it anymore, however, I've looked at this ordinance in some detail lately, and I think what this ordinance needs is a professional eye, and a professional review of what is here to clarify, because we've only scratched the surface on what we just did, and how this ordinance doesn't play with itself very well. And Dale and I discussed this, where I believe him and I are gonna recommend to the planning commission and council, that they actually get a planner in, and look this thing over, and make recommendations, because I don't have the time to do it, I could do a lot of it probably, but there are professional people out there that that's what they do, and I think it's at this time, and especially with a new master plan coming in play with this, that the two interact with each other, and be concise, and get a professional group in here to, to look at that. That being said, I clearly want to be able to have some input into it, because I end up being the enforcer of it, so I want, I want to make sure that I can still enforce it, because I, planners do great things in writing ordinances, but more often than not, they're not the enforcers of it, so they can write things that may not be that easy to enforce. So I still like input, but as far as the nitty-gritty's of getting into this, I gotta say this ordinance needs some professional help.
I would like to say, I think, considering that the current ordinance was prepared with assistance from McKenna, and my recent experience with them, and the latest draft master plan, I think that we would want to look to somebody other than McKenna possibly for the professional planning assistance.
Well, what, what our suggestion, I think, will be to, to the council, is that they seek bids.
Right.
To, to, to review and rewrite the zoning ordinance. And then we'll get proposals from different planners, and what time they will take, and what cost it will be for them to do that.
I don't disagree with you, because I've dealt with other, not just McKenna, I dealt with McKenna in another community, where there was an accessory building ordinance that once they got done with it, and the village council approved it, there was a giant loophole, a giant hole in the middle of it. It allowed people in the village of Franklin to build seven, eight thousand square foot accessory buildings, and that was whatever allowed in the past, okay? Clearly, planners are good at writing ordinances, are good at seeing how it fits with the community, and they're good at making things work within the ordinance itself, but they do still need some oversight as to what the community may or may not be looking for, and making sure that when you go through the process of trying to enforce it, that what you really intended it to say, it says, so that it can be enforced the way you wanted it enforced. Okay? That making ordinances is one thing, enforcing the ordinances are maybe a little bit different twist to it. So it, it is good for a planner, whether, no matter who the planner is, to actually format this, and get it so that the pieces interact with each other, but also the technical parts need to be gone through from an enforcement standpoint.
If I can make a suggestion, I, I think what would be a, a good step for us as a planning commission, I mean, we've already identified one ordinance where after looking through, we say, "Yeah, that's not really clear." I might suggest, I, I think I agree, it would be probably appropriate to have professional planner assist, but I think it also would be maybe a, a good idea for us to look through the existing ordinance, because what I've seen in the master plan, and I think this happens with the, happened with his ordinance, the last time around too, is that a lot of stuff may just be carried forward. So it might be a good idea for us to review, and at least identify any areas where we say, "Hey, this, this particular section or that particular section looks like it needs to be specifically looked at." So we make sure that any things that we identify upfront with existing ordinances as potential problems are addressed when we go through that process with a professional planner. What do you guys think?
I don't disagree, however, that may be, at this point in time, a little premature, but, but the planner come in and go through it, and then you double-check what they've done to make sure that that happens, versus you spending a lot of time and effort when they may just fix it along the way. So there's a thought.
Typically, do they uncomplicate these things?
No. Ordinance language is written in a language that typically attorneys. Ordinance language is written in a language that typically attorneys get involved in because they want it, well, two things. They want it to be legally enforceable, but the other part is they want it to be vague enough that they got work to do when you're done, okay?
I've dealt with ordinances a lot, but they're virtually uncomplicated. You know, you've got three or four pages that you can read through it, and it's, and it gets pretty exact with bullets that says this, this, and this. This is how fencing will be, side lot, you know, the, all of that, but it's very exact.
Right, but that's how this book this thick turns into this book this thick. I'm just, because I've been through, I worked for a city, which was a township. They started out with an ordinance this thick, and by the time I left there employed, we had two books this thick, okay? The point being is that, yes, you want to make them uncomplicated. I want to make them uncomplicated. You don't know the phone calls I get all the time, what, well, can I do this or can I do that? And like Dale and I had experienced, the what-if phone calls, they come back to haunt ya. That's why in this one case, it was, it was bad enough, I said, put your question in writing, because then I know what's being asked, and then I'll answer in writing, because what ifs get you in trouble every time. So, but yes, clarity would stop a lot of interaction that leaves it vague.
Okay, Larry.
Yeah, just one other thing I think we should, speaking to that point about clarity and what you said about ordinance that thick, I think it's also, we should also consider our modern age and make sure our new ordinance has those cross-references throughout, so when we have a situation like this, we have all those cross-references in place, and especially we should make sure we have electronic copy that can be posted, so that when you get to that cross-reference, you can just click on it and they'll take you to those other sections and make that navigation and that chasing of these definitions and things down much easier.
That will work.
In response, there are a couple of companies that are working with communities on their ordinances to make that happen. Currently, American Legal doesn't do it, but on rare occasions, and Mutico does it, and they're one of the ones that's starting to expand their ordinance registries whereby when they do that, they have the click on ordinances that take you from here to here to here to here that you, that you need to have, not unlike what I did with you earlier, only you could do it just by clicking button. And versus me saying, okay, now turn the page to this and I'll turn the page to that. But they're currently, they're few and far between right now, but there are more coming online because of the digital age.
Okay.
Lee.
Yes, Rick.
Since I've been on the planning commission, and ordinances have come up many times, especially for variances, it appears to me that some of our ordinances, the punishments for not following the ordinance seem to be inordinate to the infraction or crime or whatever you want to call it. And I would like us to consider each of these ordinances, look at them, see where it seems that the punishment, if you want to call it that, is out of line with the...
Infraction.
Infraction, yeah. Because I think we have quite a few of those. And I know, I always hear...
Are you talking zoning?
Zoning. I always hear that we have to have severe or escalating responses in order to force people to follow the ordinance, but some of them seem to be out of control or out of hand.
My question would be, Lee, if I may, what, what, I'm not sure I'm clear on what you're saying. Is it the fine that can be assessed against them, or is it what you make them do to comply?
Fines, fines. Which is what you make them do.
Well, I can answer that, Bill. For example, one of the things we gotta do better, okay? If somebody calls in this office and it pertains to construction of any, they should, they should take a message and have, have you call back, because supposedly, when I read in the report that this guy called twice. But I assume if somebody calls and has, because even me, some of these ordinances you read without being a bill, you gotta read the definitions and all that. It took you how long to research it to come up with your decision? I mean, it should be easier that a guy goes, hey, I want to put a fence up, and this is my lot. You can say, hey, you can do this, you can't do that. We don't do a very good job of that.
No, that's why the recommendation is redo the ordinance.
Oh, yeah. Yes, Tony.
Back to Rick's question, the attorney did recommend that as we were going through some violations. They said that that is kind of antiquated and to look at it, and we kind of had a brief conversation with Dale and kind of reviewing that information as well, so I think that's a valid point.
The municipal civil infraction.
Right, being a misdemeanor versus the civil infraction.
Oh, yeah. That amazes me that you have so many misdemeanors versus municipal civil.
Well, and that's what Rick was saying, yeah.
But I mean, you guys have to communicate it to us too, not when we got an issue with, you know, non-conformance on the fence. I mean, you guys gotta explain to, or memo us that you guys are discussing these items so we're made aware of it. Would be nice, commute, what they call intercommunication between the village council, the building department, the DDA, all of these. We talked about it six months ago, about being more open. I haven't seen anything happen. I mean, I don't see, we used to get copies of the minutes from the village council meeting, and then all of a sudden, we don't get them anymore. Why is that? Those are kind of things we need to, Dale, that, you know, we go down this road, we need to be informed or kept abreast of what their thought, the village council thought, our DDA's thought, Bill's thought, so we're up to speed. When we come in a meeting, you go, and then you go, well, we discussed this with Bill and that, we don't know anything about that.
And that wasn't a discussion with Bill. That was a discussion with the homeowner and the attorney and me at the time as interim manager. So when the manager came on, I wanted to bring him up to speed. So it wasn't a council discussion or a committee discussion at all. It was just a one-on-one, that this was something that was a concern. And then when Rick mentioned it, that's the only reason.
But like I say, we need better communication amongst the group. Yes?
I completely agree with you, and in my defense, I have been extremely overwhelmed until we got a new village manager, and so that's why a lot of those things that you used to get in your packets went by the wayside. It was, it was a time issue.
Okay.
And they are available online.
Hey, I understand. See, we communicate, and then I understand, I go, yeah, I agree with you, she's had her head swelled.
Can I communicate with you, Lee?
Go ahead.
So do we need to make a recommendation to the council to bid out, you know, for somebody to review our zoning ordinance? Do we need to do that, or is it totally up to the council?
Or is that village manager, do you just take it to them and discuss it?
Well, it wouldn't be out of line for you to recommend to the village council that they, and hire a planning firm to assist in the redrafting of the zoning ordinance. I mean, that's your opinion, and you're saying it to them. Bill and I will make a similar recommendation, and they'll know that you agreed that that's part of what should happen.
If I could just say real quick to that, though, I think that we need to first see the master, the current master plan draft officially approved before we start moving into the zoning ordinance review.
I agree. You mean, that's still not approved?
I have an update for you.
Yeah.
When we get to that point.
Yeah, I might have waited.
I was told that was supposed to be done in May.
Okay, so...
But upon completion of that master plan, then we'll wait. I have no, no big deal, because you're not gonna do anything with it anyways, but we, we need to keep it on our agenda.
Right.
So that goes on, so it isn't overlooked.
And we certainly could, could suggest that as soon as the master plan is approved, they should start considering looking for a planner to work with.
I'd second that, Larry.
Oh, I was gonna support yours, okay.
So do we have an actual motion over here?
Oh, I thought Larry did.
And I think Bob was making that motion.
Yeah.
And Melanie seconded it.
Okay.
And what was that recommending? I've got to hire a planning firm to assist.
Once the master plan is approved.
Once the master plan is completed.
And that's our recommendation to the council.
Once the master plan is completed, then what Dale said. Because he put it perfectly well.
Did you have that part?
Gotta have a will. She can put in the minute.
And we'll just pray no more fences come in, Tony.
Okay, so do you have something that I lose yet?
On the master plan?
Oh, my recommendation.
Yeah, once the master plan is approved.
Oh, oh, for the motion. I'm sorry.
Got everything.
So my motion was to recommend to council hiring a planning firm to assist in reviewing zoning ordinances once the master plan has been completed.
Just like Bob said.
I thought so.
Exactly like he said it, right.
You gotta watch when you're on tape, because they quote you exactly what you say.
So that was a motion by McArthur, seconded by Hayden, or I don't know.
Some complain they don't.
Yeah. Barry was being generous with that.
Okay, all, all, we gonna do a roll call? Ball, favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Move security. Thanks, Bob. Okay, we move on to item D, November meeting date.
The reason why I put that on the calendar...
Election?
Yes, and as we're getting ready to do our bylaws, Oakland County will be having an election, a special election this November, so I'm assuming there's hopefully three or four.
College.
Right, but it's for all of Oakland County. So I'm assuming there's three or four of us that will not be able to attend the November meeting, and did we want to reschedule till that Thursday or the week after, which is...
I thought we already moved it to Wednesday.
Okay, would be normally the fourth.
The week after is deer season.
Oh.
You know that, you know what happens in November?
Deer season.
I thought we already moved it to Wednesday in January. We already moved it because of elections.
How did we move it to Wednesday in January?
No, no, in January, we moved it to the day after our Thursday.
Didn't we already do that?
I, my calendar shows that.
We did have that discussion, I didn't call that. I didn't know if a date was...
I don't know.
Did we know we were having an election?
No.
We always, we moved it permanently for elections.
Did we?
The following day?
And we did, because we said in January, we come across this every year.
Correct.
And it always be moved to Wednesday election week.
Oh.
Well, let me take a look at that.
Oh, then that's good.
Maybe it's not official.
So when is the election day come?
Fifth.
Okay, so we want to do it on the sixth? Is that Wednesday, the sixth?
We would love to work 18 hours and then show up.
Oh.
No, it's kind of teasing. Bob's up longer than the rest of us.
Is that okay with your itinerary, Tony?
That's, that'll work fine.
I have it on the calendar as November 5th. What day of the week is that?
That's Wednesday.
Then it's Tuesday, okay.
We didn't do it.
Oh, oh, no. Okay, so...
The fifth is Tuesday, which is election day.
So November 6th is then?
Or 7th.
Thursday, like.
Do you want to do Thursday, and that's the 7th? Want to do the 7th, so you guys get a break?
Doesn't make a difference.
Because you guys are all working elections, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
I would like to see in January that's permanent, because next year we have a March, August, and November election.
Well, that's what part of your bylaws are.
Yeah.
Oh, good, that's coming up.
Can I get a motion on changing that, though, please?
To which day?
The 7th.
The 7th.
I'll make a motion that we have our, our planning commission meeting in November on the 7th.
And which day is that?
It's the 3rd day.
Support.
That would be 2019.
So the...
Okay.
Our October meeting is the 1st, right?
October meeting is on the 8th.
The 8th.
On the calendar.
It's the first Tuesday of the month.
I'm not saying I'm perfect, I'm just saying it sounds fair.
My calendar shows the first Tuesday is the 1st.
It is.
Do you have that full sheet of the original date?
I showed the 8th on my calendar.
You showed what, the 8th?
The planning commission meeting. You know, I can't remember if that came up, you know, the council for the meeting with the planning commission, because what I do remember is something about they didn't have a July meeting, and I said, well, we should, it's easier to cancel the meeting than to try to add one.
I have it on the 8th.
Okay.
It's on the 8th? Right.
That's okay.
So we'll mark that in here.
So it might have been council that you remember from, all right?
Well, yeah, you're right.
Anybody remember why we put it on the 8th?
No idea.
Just the way I had it on my calendar, it was the 8th, too. I have no idea why.
Me neither.
All right. All right, so we got...
All right.
Okay, so we took, took care of November, and we're gonna move on. Planning commission bylaws in review.
So I did all of the updates that were requested at the last meeting.
We probably have to change it. Now let me have to allow for, I have it right here. Yes, Melanie.
All right, I just have two questions. The first one was on the first page under Members, number A. Did we, it said, no less than five nor more than nine. Did we have that originally, nine members?
I think that's part of the planning and enabling act.
Okay, so we have to have that many?
Minimum of five for a meeting?
Yeah, but do we have to have up no more than nine?
Yeah, it says that.
We do, okay. All right, and then my second question was under Officers, number B, it starts at the bottom, and then you go to the back page.
Wait, which page?
Two, page two, it continues under B.
Oh, okay.
It says then the commission should hold an election within 60 days. Is that correct?
The election of commissioned officers.
I'm just, right here.
I thought they were appointed.
They are appointed, so that's why I'm bringing it up, that's...
No, that, but that's what you're looking at is talking about post.
Officers of the planning commission itself, it's like your own officer.
Read the top section of that.
Yeah, sure.
Because that's what, what you're looking at is related to postponement of elections.
Of elections, like that happened here.
The chairman of...
Which, by the way, did we do that?
For our, our...
I phrased that as a point.
Yeah, okay. All right. Okay, I have no more questions.
Just as a comment with that 1A, it was mentioned at the last council meeting to possibly consider five.
Yes.
So...
And I think even in village, you're talking about commission. I think it should be seven at the most, but if that is a law, then we can't change that. Is that what you're saying?
Well, it is your bylaws.
It says determined by village council.
Oh, okay, well, then that's why I circled that, so why did we decide nine?
The bylaws says that you can have five to nine, and this is just saying that you're gonna follow state law.
Did we want nine? Is that...
And it's determined by the village council.
Yeah, oh.
Planning commission doesn't decide it.
Okay, all right.
And the comment was made at the last meeting to consider five.
Yeah, and I think village council should be five as well.
I agree.
I do.
I agree with you.
We're spending too much money on meetings.
Be aware of why seven is a great number.
Tony and I are the biggest offenders of that, supposedly.
Let me pass this to you, Gary.
Be careful, people.
But, yeah, okay, so village council will determine that, then. Okay.
Well, we're currently selling this.
Now, for officers, we, we decided to get rid of the vice chairman.
Correct.
And just go with secretary and chairman.
Yeah, and we still have to then vote on those.
Correct.
Okay.
What's the secretary do?
Or elect.
What's her responsibility?
What Rick does.
He's supposed to record all the meetings.
You make sure that...
Make sure doing the X-checker for the person that does the minutes?
And he also, when you're, when you're not here, he conducts the meeting, yeah.
He also serves as the chair when the chair first comes up.
Yeah, he runs the meeting when you're not here.
DM is secretary.
Right. Did you have any questions? I already looked at it over, so, would you have any, Rick?
Okay.
Sorry, did you not look at it?
Now make sure we don't have any loopholes for the council with that.
Okay.
Oh, I see, and even the secretary may be assisted in the performance of these duties.
Such employees of the village.
Yeah, we can amend them by a two-thirds vote at any regular meeting anyway, so if we find something we don't like, we can always amend it on the road.
As long as you read everything. Okay, so you had a couple items. Mel, you had one item we needed to change or they were good?
Um, no, the council is going to determine the five up to nine. And then the other thing, I misread.
Dale, did you have access to review these? Are these in line with what you?
Yes, I think this is, it covers everything that's appropriate for you to cover. So an appropriate way for you is to recommend to the council that they, this be the.
If anybody's like to make a motion, I'd entertain it.
I make a motion that we accept the bylaws as presented and it's presented to the village council for their approval.
Would be accept or adopt?
Darn good question.
What's a resolution?
Can we clarify, should we adopt the bylaws?
So it says right back here, bylaws adopted by village board of planning.
Yes, I think then we need to state that we.
That we adopted them, yeah. And then.
Motion to adopt the bylaws.
Right, and then sent to the village council for their.
Review.
Review.
I'll support that. If it wasn't supported, all right.
So the motion by Bob, seconded by Larry. All right. Liz, let me know when you're ready.
I'm ready.
Okay, all yays, please raise your hand. Okay, nays. All yays. It was motion by Bob McCarthur, seconded by Larry. Okay.
So Mr. McConventi.
I haven't worked on it.
Okay, we're gonna move on. We're in the wayfinding committee update.
Did you want me to update?
Well, I seen the, is this the one that pertains to the?
There was nothing in there for, um, nothing in the package.
I didn't see it.
No, the other thing was about the other item. So anyways, the, on the wayfinding committee, we met yesterday morning and just so you know, Mark Robinson, myself, Wayne Wills, and I believe it's Matt Bailey from the DDA, correct? All right. All right, and we started looking at, Mark Robinson and I took pictures of all the signs we could find in the village, including parks. And we just started looking at those. And some of the immediate, short-term things are making sure that if there's any lights on the signs, that those are working, clearing brush away from some of the signs are hidden by trees, tree branches, so cleaning that type of thing up. And then they were going to get in touch with somebody through Oakland County. I can't remember his name, I'm sorry. But the DDA gets free services. And they're going to come in and kind of have a session with us regarding signs and signage. So when that happens, I'll let you know. I'm sure anybody would be invited to that, that's interested. But we haven't set up our second meeting yet, so. But that's, we did one hour yesterday and it went well.
Good.
If I could just add, the, in the memo from that we received, talking about this October meeting, there was also, I think it was Oxford, that recently did a wayfinding.
Oh, or in.
Or in.
Correct.
And they're going to send us a copy of that, so we can see what the process they went through.
That's good.
I can just mention, Molly, that I know Mark Robinson was reaching out to council members in case they had any thoughts, and I already mentioned him. I think, I've seen, that I've seen communities where even the street signs have like a unique look and feel to them to give a unique character to the community, and I thought that was real cool where I've seen that in place. So I thought that would be something, you know, just as a thought to consider, too.
Well.
That wouldn't be long term, but I mean, you know.
But no, correct, but that's what, and you know what? If you have ideas, because I went online and actually pulled up some ideas and brought them to the meeting yesterday of what I thought would look neat down the line. If you have something, just Mark's heading it up, so I would say, you know, give the information to Mark. But when we get closer to that, I will let all of you know because I'm sure you guys will have some ideas or input, I'm hoping.
That's what I was going to ask, what type of input are you looking for? If you're looking for input from the three groups, like what?
I just design, style, theme, you know? But until we meet with that person, the, from Oakland County, I don't want to send anybody in the wrong direction.
Oh, so I thought everybody's going to have a hundred.
Yeah, no.
What are you looking for?
Then we'll be clear. We just met one time yesterday and we put down our short-term and long-term goals, kind of thing, yeah.
And so planning commission only currently has one person then.
Patty was, Patty and I are going to do it together, so. Do you guys, do we want to replace someone? Somebody at time, Bob?
I'm in enough trouble, you know.
Would you be interested? No, okay, all right, that's fine.
All right, else, anything else? If not, we'll move on to master plan draft review.
I've been waiting.
You guys know that I've been trying to get itemized invoices from McKenna for the last three invoices because it feels like we are giving them changes and we're getting charged for things that are their mistakes. So after the last meeting that the village council had, they had a couple of changes, which I had provided to you guys, forwarded them on to McKenna with a spreadsheet of this page, this is the change, this page, this is the change. And they were going to get everything done and back to me right away. We're on four weeks now. They input all of our changes and somehow we're not able to save them. And so now we're waiting on them to re-input the requested changes and send them over to me.
Are they going to charge again, do they?
They will not charge us double, they promised me that.
Those don't receive an invoice.
But, yeah.
And we're still sitting on an invoice, their latest invoice that we haven't paid until we receive an authorization.
And so the only thing I've received are maps. And there were minor changes to the maps with, you know, putting at the bottom, the one in particular, this was one citizen's input.
Okay, oh, yes, yeah.
So.
How far, how many revisions back does it go where it hasn't been saved?
Just the most recent.
Okay, all right, that's.
It was not a lot. I mean, I did the changes myself in a day. And I asked them, because everything they had been giving to us was in PDF format, so I scanned everything over in PDF format. Do you want my Word document for the changes as well? No, no, don't need it. Well, then they needed it all of a sudden. And that's where we got into where we were getting charged for page renumbering, is when they converted from Adobe to Word, back to Adobe. So I will keep you posted. My update.
Well, we appreciate the work you've done.
Thank you so much. I'm sorry.
Adobe is such a.
This has turned into a nightmare for you.
We've got to buy it.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Well, it's okay, I mean, luckily.
Almost 200 dollars a month.
Cut in for championing to make sure that it's not troubling, not just making the changes and submitting it, the submit invoices and things.
For a year.
Yeah.
And that's all I have on.
See, as far as our stance on, we don't feel we should be charged for. There are, at least on their side. Do you think?
Hundred, maybe, 100 dollars.
You think that will fly, or no?
They all do it.
Okay.
Carl, yeah, those are the same thing.
Okay.
Yeah. It might be their fault, they charge it for fixing it. It's kind of like doing your income tax.
They can charge it, but they don't need to pay.
Correct, okay.
Yeah.
Well, okay, I like that.
Summer there has been happy meeting.
Yeah.
All right, so we're waiting, Liz, on that, then?
Yes, and as soon as I get that back, of course, I'll give it to village council because there are changes, but I will also copy planning commission as well.
Okay. Okay, capital equipment, capital improvement plan. Now, you were supposed to update an Excel sheet.
We did.
Yeah, that was last meeting.
You're adding something.
We were adding a column for status. Did we add that?
Did you do that?
I didn't make a change, but I know that at the council meeting, we discussed the possibility of adding in that second piece into the drains.
The schoolhouse?
Yeah, well, the one where we talked about in basketball court.
The basketball court.
That we added that as a possible kind of drains into the master plan, and the capital improvement plan.
So we're waiting on that, then?
Well, that was really the only change.
Yeah, the only change was status and I will share this at the council meeting. We had citizens that were also complaining about drainage on schoolhouse and part of that was related to, according to, I think, was it Bob Huxwell that gave?
Okay.
Provided some.
And so did Bob McCusman, I see.
Yeah, some updates that there apparently is a, they've come in and there's some sort of a junction point that's somewhere under the basketball courts, where they think that if they could get down there and clear that out, that might help with some of the drainage issues.
Oh, I thought you were talking about the schoolhouse, I'm sorry.
That's two, there's two different issues. That drain that needs to be fixed at the back, but then there was an issue on the, and I don't know what you did because I left before you got to that, but the, there was an issue of schoolhouse itself drainage because they raised the level of the road four inches.
Oh, when they re.
And they raised it four inches over all the driveways, over the sidewalks. So when it rained, the water does not go to the drain. It goes to everybody's yards, everybody's driveway, the sidewalk and two or three driveways are flooded. It dries up after three or four days, but I, the real concern is come January.
The ice?
You're going to have an ice skating pond there. They took care of my little problem, but they created a much bigger one.
And we did add a status column that has been added.
Okay.
I think when I sent it out, in my email, I said I deferred to Larry for his professional adjustment.
Yeah, we want to write for him. So, but that'll be forwarded to us once that's updated.
I can put it to you.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, we can do that.
Anything else on the capital improvement?
And Liz, would you be able to maybe get some details or find something, a way to add in that one line item like we're suggesting? I think that we probably should put that in there. We may not add cuss husband or anything yet, but at least to have a placeholder for that particular aspect, because I think that's probably going to be enough expense if they're going to be excavating all that stuff, that it probably should be in the list.
Can I ask, I know we're not in the right area, but I'll wait until you. Never mind. Anything else you guys want to discuss on capital improvement? No, all right. Discussion items. Whatever happened on the fixing of the drain, it goes from City Hall underneath Cedar Street to the creek.
Dale, do you want to give an update?
Well, the council at their last meeting authorized a topographic studies of the area so that we can look at a variety of means to resolve the drainage at that park and, but that's a first step in developing those kind of things. And then depending on how it's proposed to us from the engineering firm that we're talking to now, we may go back to the council with a recommendation that they provide some alternative plans and estimates of cost. We have an estimate of cost right now, but it's for a direction for the drainage that we can't do.
Yeah, the reason for that is the Oakland County Sanitarium would not approve the proposal to go under an existing septic.
Oh, okay, because of the guy, the guy that wanted to do a septic when you dig up for the drain, is that the?
No, there's an existing septic system there.
A Mill Street. There's a Mill Street address with an existing septic and a blank piece of property that they have no idea there's a septic on. So you have both issues.
So they got to re, they're going to reroute it?
We don't know yet. I mean, we need the topographic study so that we can tell how the land lays and where the potentials are. The fact that the Sanitarium from Oakland County has told us we can't go under the septic tank is not a final word.
Right.
Because it does happen from time to time. And the engineering firm that we're dealing with now is familiar with the Oakland County Sanitariums and assures us that there's various alternatives. So we're, we're looking at what is, how can we solve this drainage problem in the least expensive way?
Thank you. Anybody else have anything?
Discussion items? Is that what you're asking? Discussion items we're talking about?
I didn't hear what you said.
Do you have it?
I, I did a moment ago. So go ahead.
Oh, no.
I might get back to it.
All right, no, I'm done. I was asking anybody else.
Go around, start with.
Yeah, maybe you'll remember.
Looking. Other than I guess I need Tanya, those, you have that joint meeting survey?
Bill?
I'm one of them.
Liz? You haven't been treated bad or anything now?
No.
Frustrated.
I can't help you. I don't know what you were even thinking.
Parks and Rec. Weed, weed infestation.